Good afternoon and welcome to the June ninth regular council meeting of the Oldstown Council. I call the meeting to order at 1:00 P.M. We'll move down to the added items portion of the agenda and I'll ask council if they have any added items today. Seeing none, I will then move down to item B, adoption of the agenda, please. An emotion to adopt the agenda? Or are we going to go consensus? We're going to stay with consensus, that's a good one. We're all good? All right, so dem- excuse me, consensus to adopt the agenda as presented. And moving down to page two of your agenda, the regular council meeting minutes of May 26, 2025. Does council have questions? additions, deletions? Seeing none, I believe we have consensus then also for the regular council meeting minutes of May 26, 2025. Very good, we will now move down to the public hearing portion of our agenda on page five of your agenda. And before I declare it, the public hearing open, I will read the pecuniary interest for the municipal councillors. Section 172 of the MGA says that you may not take part in the discussion and decision-making of any matter in which you have a pecuniary interest. Legislation attempts to ensure that you are not discriminated. If you are, if you have a pecuniary interest, you are to disclose that you have an interest and its nature, you are to abstain from any discussion of the matter and from voting. You are to leave the room until the matter has been dealt with and you should make sure that you abstain. Your abstention is recorded in the minutes and you are not to be discriminated in any way. I now declare the public hearing for bylaw 2025-11 open at 1:02 P.M. Thank you, and I will direct this now to our municipal planner, Mr. Kyle Sloan.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Bylaw 2025-11 proposes to accomplish two things. The first is to rezone two parcels of land located at 6102 and 6402, 48th Avenue, from DC 7, Direct Control District, that's specific to cannabis production, to I-1, which is our general light industrial district. The second thing that's proposed in this bylaw is to introduce a new definition that is not currently in the bylaw and that's for a data center. The proposed meaning would be that that is a building used to store computer systems and associated components for the storage or processing of data and may require constant climate control. The, that definition would then be added as permitted use to the I-1 district, not specific to this parcel at all, but throughout town. We have had a number of inquiries recently about this and our bylaw being from a time when data centers didn't exist does not have this defined, so we're just adding that as a listed use. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Before I move forward with this, I'm just scanning through the gallery and I do not see anybody here that is speaking for or against this bylaw. Very good, and we have no one online? Very good, so then I will move right down and ask my council if they have any comments. Keeping in mind, of course, I do understand there was no written correspondence received at all for this proposed bylaw as well, is that correct, Mr. Sloan?
That's correct.
Very good. I will, do you have any closing comments you'd like to share? Very good, then I declare the public hearing closed at 1:04 P.M. and ask you to refer back to page five, please, for the bylaw and ask for second reading. Counselor Wilson?
Thank you, Mayor Doll, I make the motion that bylaw 2025-11 be given second reading as presented.
Very good, thank you, Counselor Wilson. Those in favor? That is carried. Third and final reading, please. Counselor Blatz, Deputy Mayor Blatz.
Thank you, Mayor Doll, I move that bylaw 2025-11 be given third reading as presented.
Very good, Deputy Mayor, those in favor? That is carried, and thank you, Mr. Sloan, for your time today. We will move forward now. Down to page nine, which is 4A of your agenda, and this is our RCMP quarterly report, and I'll have our C.A.O. introduce our RCMP member.
Thank you, Mayor Doll. Today, standing for acting staff Sergeant Jamie Day is Mr. Life Svensson. So, Life, welcome.
Thank you, C.A.O. Williams. Good afternoon, Mayor Doll, councilors. As mentioned, Staff Sergeant, or Acting Staff Sergeant Jamie Day, sends his regards here in this place. My apologies for not being in uniform, I tweaked a part of my body playing hockey a couple weeks ago, so I'm on modified duties for the week, but I'm here nonetheless. I did send the report, the stats, to Director Andrew in May. Obviously, it must have made its way to you for review. I'll just ask if there's any comments or questions with respect to any of the information that you see in front of you.
We'll start with Counselor Ryan.
Thank you, Mayor Doll, and through you to, was it constable, officer, sergeant?
Corporal.
Corporal, thank you, I didn't hear what your title was, thank you. Corporal Spencer, I don't know if you can answer this question I have or not, but it was on page two of your report with regards to, it was on page 11 in the agenda package on the crime stats. Just had a quick question on the other provincial stats, which is under the total, I guess, total for the provincial stats we have. There's number 58 there and it's quite a bit of an increase, and I'm just wondering if you had any idea of what these particular stats include and what, if you had any idea of trends or anything for the reason for the jump? I'm not sure if you can answer that question.
I can't, I can't answer it specifically. Three of the major ones that you see above, liquor act, cannabis act, mental health act, those are three of the major provincial statutes that we deal with, non-criminal nature. It's a wide variety of items, they're all provincially based though, based on statutes and laws that it could be, I mean, as you see, everything's tied in municipal bylaws in terms of traffic, tickets, different offenses under the, say, Traffic Safety Act, rules of the road regulations, things like that. So, it's, they're not criminal in nature, they're not, in my opinion, in my experience, not as significant as what you see in the rest of the document, especially on page one. So, I have no specific information based on that because of the wide variety of events that occur within that particular portion of the document.
So, thank you very, so this would just basically deal with the traffic safety component probably with regards to any kind of enforcement, traffic stops, going through stop signs and things like that, is that right?
Yeah, it is very possible. The numbers, as you see, total provincial traffic, and the third shaded, or the first shaded row near the bottom of the document, 262. Again, that's everything traffic related and other provincial statistics could very well fall within that as well.
Do I have a couple of questions myself? For your report with regards to mischief, other, the stats have really jumped here to 22 from last year of 10. Is there a common area that you're seeing the trend for the stats? It's on page 10 in the agenda?
Yes, I see that, and I noticed that as well during my review of the stats. So mischief, again, is a very broad offense within the criminal code. Mischief, I mean, there's a definition within, I believe, the dictionary, I mean, probably up to no good, if you will, but mischief, it can include noise complaints, it can include neighbors disturbing other neighbors for a variety of reasons. It's a very low-risk component of what we do in the criminal code. Again, a wide variety of occurrences can be reported within that mischief complaint or event type. I have no concern with it at all based on my knowledge of the code and the things that I've reviewed over my time in Olds here and everywhere else I've been.
And the other one I had was to do with the common police activities for false alarms, and I'm thinking it might have something to do also with the fire department, so either yourself or Director Andrew could answer that.
I can speak to it first off. Typically, it was a significant increase over the last quarter of the last fiscal year. I mean, it is 10 more occurrences, up from 16 to 26. A lot of this is to do with equipment malfunction, employee error when they're, say, keying in their code at the workplace when they first come to work, or if they arm it, or say, attempt to arm it when they leave and they don't do it properly, then we get a call to go to, say, a bank or another workplace. I hope that answers your question.
Certainly it does. Are there any other questions? Counselor Cummings and then Counselor Wilson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. If I can draw your attention to page, I think it's the second page of the stats anyways, where offensive weapons are listed. We're up to three in the first quarter of this year, and I know that most recently there was an announcement by the RCMP that another weapons, weapon was seized during a drug raid in Olds. It seems that those numbers are always increasing, we hear about it a lot in the news, we see it a lot in our local detachment getting these weapons off the street. So, I'm kind of happy that we're getting weapons off the street, kind of sad that there's that many weapons on the street in Olds that are involved. I'm assuming involved in other crimes. And I'm going to talk about two, I think, that aren't even included in this, three, the one that was just recently announced where the gentleman had a firearm in his RV, and then the drug raid that was done in the north end of town that also yielded a firearm. In your experience, are you, is it normal for us to have this? Because the stats don't seem to bear it out. This many firearm-related offenses or this many firearms seized during other raids? Is it something that the community should be very worried about or not?
I don't think it's something that the community should be worried about at all. If you look at the overall percentage, this is 200% jump from the previous quarter. Most definitely looks significant, but the actual number is three versus one from prior, so we have two more occurrences. The information that you mentioned here, the details you mentioned regarding the previous search warrants, that's not included in this quarter, of course, seeing as the fiscal year ended in March 31st. However, these things do happen, like I can speak of, one from this quarter, I believe, was an individual who had a collapsible baton in his custody or his care, when he was taken into custody for another matter. It was for, his words, personal protection. It's not a prohibited device to own a collapsible baton, such as what I carry when I'm on duty in my uniform. We take these weapons from individuals when there's offenses, say, related to why they're in custody. If they consent to them being relinquished, then we'll take them off their hands as well, obviously for public safety reasons. But based on the number over three months, offensive weapons, I mean, it appears to be quite serious, the way it's described, offensive weapons, but it could be a pocket knife, it could be a baton, as I mentioned. In the most recent search with our Crime Reduction Unit that supported the investigation that you referred to earlier, firearms are very rarely seized here. A year and a half ago, we did have a public safety search warrant for firearms in the community. No charges were laid as a result of public safety warrant, it's a mechanism to get them off the street. In that case, though, we did seize a number of non-restricted firearms, hunting rifles, shotguns and such, but this type of occurrence, as you can see from the numbers, it's not happening very often at all. Three and a quarter isn't significant to me. I've worked in places that, where many more weapons were seized, even on a weekly basis. So, it's all relative to the community and the place that I've worked in. Olds is, in my opinion, a very safe place to be, and I don't think that that number and that percentage should cause any concerns to the citizens of the community, in my opinion.
Thank you for answering that, and we'll go to Counselor Wilson.
Thank you, Mayor Doll, and through you to the corporal, just a question, I'm going to take this now a slightly little different path around traffic enforcement, tied in maybe perhaps a little bit page 11 around alcohol suppressions and so on, but, so we're into the summer season now, traffic patterns are changing, we've got more activity on the roads, events, hydration becomes an issue. Can you talk a little bit about traffic enforcement within the town? Less so around speeding, speeding always is a hot button topic for our citizens, not so much when we had our recent coffee with council session, there were one or two inquiries. But can you talk a little bit about just general traffic enforcement in town, to the extent you can without giving away any secrets? How that looks, what does that look like through the summer? And how do we blend in with mandatory alcohol screening, which came in many years ago, 2018? What's the process there relative to policies within the detachment, within guidelines, within individual officer discretion and your spidey senses? How does that mandatory alcohol screening work in a lawful traffic stop? Thanks.
No problem. That's a good question, a couple of questions. I'll speak to the mandatory alcohol screening first, if you don't mind. So mandatory alcohol screening, as you just mentioned, has been in place, it's been a law in Canada since 2018. Basically, it gives any peace officer or police officer the authorization to demand a breath sample from any operator of any motor vehicle regardless of the circumstances, there doesn't have to be suspicion, or any belief that the operator of the vehicle or motor vehicle has been, is impaired or has been consuming alcohol. So, it uses a preventative measure to deter impaired driving, basically. If people know that they're going to be blowing into approved screening device, an ASD, as we call it, every time they're pulled over, then hopefully people will realize that you don't have to just have 10 drinks with a tremendous amount of liquor on your breath or all the other symptoms, you know, glossy eyes, flushed cheeks, slurred speech and whatnot, to be, I guess, issued a breath demand. So, it's to be proactive rather than reactive. Back in the day before 2018, we were discouraged from using ASDs, approved screen devices, to test for alcohol or liquor onboard when persons pulled over because we were told to use our, I guess, our investigative abilities to determine if a driver is impaired, for example, driving behavior, again, third speech, their appearance, if I ask for a motor vehicle, a driver to give me their driver's license, registration, insurance card, their behavior, their fumbling, say, of their wallet. And then, if we're absolutely not 100% sure that they've been consuming alcohol and that their ability to operate a vehicle is impaired, then we would use the ASD. Now, it's the first thing we'll do, we'll advise them as to why the person stopped. It has to be a lawful detention, of course, a failed signal or a blown stop sign. Then they'll present the approved screening device, explain the mandatory alcohol screen demand to the driver of the vehicle, and then usually the person driving the vehicle will comply and blow because the punishment for failing or refusing to provide a sample is the same as being impaired if you're over .08. So, it's regular practice, it doesn't matter time of day, the driving behavior, the, I mean, we're not discriminatory when it comes to who we stop, why we stop them, and then why we ask them to blow, it's law. So, it's the members' option to, again, administer the mandatory alcohol screen demand and then to administer the ASD device to the driver. There's no, I mean, a lot of drivers ask us, why am I doing this? It's 10:30 in the morning, I'm with my kids, I'm going to the mall, I haven't been drinking, it doesn't matter, and we explain it on scene, and this is bigger than the town of Olds, I mean, it's law within the country of Canada, and then obviously the government of Alberta has its own provisions when it comes to meter roadside sanctions and the punishment associated to driving impaired. So, I don't know if that answers your question with respect to mandatory alcohol screening?
Thank you.
And now, to answer the question with respect to traffic enforcement, you're absolutely right, more vehicles on the road, people with their campers going to, say, campgrounds or Crownland, people cruising their convertible, say, if the sun's out and the top's down. We had Canada's Road Safety Week a couple of weeks ago, we set up deliberate check stops at particular intersections and locations to obviously pull people over and let them know why we're doing it, if we're looking for impaireds or seat belts, for example. Just to educate people first of all, because I know I participated in a few of those and I found no infractions, this is a good thing, but we are going to be stepping up traffic enforcement here and there, time of day, weekends, say, school zones, but what we really want though are people to come forward and to bring up concerns, say, in a school zone. If they're dropping their children off in a school zone, hey, I see or I believe people are speeding through this area. When I'm dropping my kids off, I have a concern for the safety of the children and everybody else in the location, and we will go and we'll conduct traffic enforcement in that area, if it's a problem location according to the citizens in the community, right? But, I mean, our members are out and about, they'll pull people over as they see fit based on driving behavior. It might be time of day, if, say, bar at the Bulldogs is on and we see someone who needs to be pulled over based on their behaviors or their driving behavior or their pattern, then we'll do it. It always increases in the summertime based on volume and whatnot, the obvious factors. Christmas time, you know, with check stops because of the season, but summertime, we will be increasing traffic enforcement, and we have a number of members who are really eager to do so just to keep the roads safe in our community for our citizens, for the obvious reasons.
Thank you very much. That was very thorough and well explained, and I like the eager to do so part. Looks like we have no further questions at this time, so once again, thank you for coming to our council today, Corporal Svensson, and have a good rest of the day.
Thank you, Mayor Doll, thank you to everyone in the room.
All right.
Have a wonderful day yourselves.
Yes, take care. I'd entertain a motion, please. Counselor Ryan?
Thank you, Mayor Doll, I move the council accepts the Royal Canadian Mounted Police Quarterly Report as presented.
Very good, thank you. I will now call for the vote, those in favor. That is carried. Moving down to page 22, please, now for B, Infrastructure Services Quarterly Report. C.A.O. Williams.
Thank you, Mayor Doll, and Dr. Pedro's with us here too, walk us through his report. Adrian.
Good afternoon, council. I'd be happy to guide us through the Q2 report for Infrastructure Services. Moving on to, okay. Our first page here, we are just reporting on the utilities' key performance indicators. So, what we've done in both utilities and Public Works as part of our business plan draft, we have established what our high-level KPIs are going to be. These are those four utilities, and as you can see, we have been quite busy. On a quick glance, I do notice that pressure testing, there should be 396 in Q2, so we've been quite busy with that investigation this year. Moving on to the utilities' work order summary, so through citywide, our work order platform, we are able to break down the type of work that the crews are doing. So, in utilities, you can see primarily lab work and sampling have by far the most work orders. However, I would note that something like leak detection in the bottom left of that pie chart, there's only 23 work orders for that, however, it does often take the most time. So, the pie chart is not necessarily representative of time, just the amount that we're doing. Moving on to water loss and INI, this is just a quick summary on what we've done in Q2, so we have repaired seven service leaks on the water side. We do have a number of outstanding locations that we are aware of, it's just we're having issues trying to find them. So unfortunately, this year, leaks have been quite elusive, so we're having to spend a lot more time trying to find where they are and employing different technology to try and do so. And on the wastewater side, we have been busy finding infiltration, so May was quite helpful with all of the precipitation that we did see to try and track down certain locations. A couple of those locations are the Cornerstone Village, which we are dealing with, the developer on that, and then Smithy's Plaza is also a recent one that we discovered. And at both locations, essentially what we're seeing is that grading adjacent to sanitary manholes is tying any sort of stormwater into those manholes. So, it is quite a problem in town, and these are only two of the few locations that we found so far. And we have received quite a bit of the thorough footage for the sanitary sewer, and in the southwest quadrants, north is how we break down the sections, we do have 12 areas of infiltration found, and so that's requiring us to go out and do investigation to find where that water is coming from, and that could be anything from groundwater to an actual water leak, so whether it's on a service or water main itself. So, that is keeping us quite busy. And getting into the percentages, I kid you not, this is my least favorite time of the month when I get these percentages, but what we are seeing is there was an uptick in April. It's rather unfortunate, however, when we do compare the 2024 averages, percentage-wise, we are lower, which I think is a good sign. In a few slides here, I will explain where I think a lot of the discrepancy in the percentages is coming from, so I'm happy to answer any questions on that shortly. Annual water distribution volumes, so tying into the last slide, what I'd like to show council is that we're comparing the distribution, i.e. the outflow from the reservoirs, year over year. And so what we are seeing in 2025, there is a notable decrease, and a lot of that would be attributable to a lot of the repairs that we're doing. And so you can even see in May is a great example of this, so back in 2022, it was quite high, and then it's decreased in 2023, further decrease in 2024, and then a notable decrease in 2025. So I think it just speaks to all of the repairs that we are doing are having an effect, they're not necessarily being reflected in the percentages, however, there is a reason for that in our estimation. So I think overall in the water distribution volumes, this is a good sign as well. And breaking down a little bit more detail on the wastewater volume side, so these are the volumes that get sent to the SRD lift station. What's interesting about this data, comparing it the last four years, is that we are seeing that the effect of precipitation each month is becoming less and less. So I'll jump back to May as my example here, you can see that the 2024 rainfall volume was quite high, I believe numerically this was around 127 millimeters, and that resulted in quite a high SRD volume. I think it was 144,000 to be exact cubic meters. And then in May, what we're seeing is that even though this red line here denotes this was 98 millimeters of rainfall this May, we did have substantially less volume that went to the SRD lift station. So what this tells me, and previous months show a similar trend, what this tells me is that the repairs and work that we are doing is again having results. So, we all know historically that rain, rainfall is an issue in town, and it does get into the system, and so I think we're making progress in that regard as well. And moving on to our water meters, so we are proceeding with phase one, and if council recalls, phase one was 640 meters that were being replaced with Kempf trip meters. These numbers are slightly outdated, they are from last week, however, we are making progress on getting those installations completed. There are a number of outstanding locations, we're working through those with the contractor, anything ranging from, you know, residents not getting back to them or having certain issues with the program itself, so we'll work with the residents to move that, those. I do hope to get this wrapped up by this summer, and I think we're fairly confident we can get there. And for reference, the 640 locations are highlighted in yellow on the map. So we did decide to focus on the southwest quadrant of town, as it's historically been giving us a lot of issues for water leaks on services specifically. And moving on to water meters, phase two. So, this is sort of a big pivot for us this year, so when I'm considering the percentages that we see on the table a few slides ago, what we're quite confident with at this point is that we're suffering from a very high percentage of apparent loss. So what that means is that we're not, we're under-registering on our water meters currently. So the issue is that of our 4,000 meters... So the issue is that of our four thousand meters, three thousand of those meters approximately are fifteen years or older. The problem with mechanical meters is that once they reach that fifteen-year mark, they degrade quite substantially, and so you're not getting an accurate read on those meters. So essentially, we're under billing is what we're figuring out. Now, the the data from the Camstrip Pilot Program that we did, uh, starting in twenty twenty-three is showing us that of those ninety-four locations, there's a net increase of two hundred and twenty-three cubic meters per month for those ninety-four locations. So in doing a fairly straightforward calculation on what that net increase would look like over the remaining inventory, um, you can see here that it would equate to about ninety-five hundred cubic meters a month, which, when you calculate that into a percentage loss, that reduces our percentage water loss by about ten uh, about ten percent over the month. So this this is one of those things that we want to attack quite quickly here, which is why we're proposing to expand the replacement program this year by about seven to eight hundred meters. And we, now the issue with doing that is it is going to take away from doing other initiatives. So for example, on the sanitary main relining side, we're already identifying that that program may not get the attention that we initially thought it was this year. Um, however, when you look at the data, this is of a higher urgency at this point. So any questions on that before I move forward?
Deputy Mayor Blatz.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Doll, and through you to Director Pedro. Um, I know for a fact, having firsthand experience with the company that's coming to do meters, they're very um, compatible and that they're very helpful with you in trying to set up a time that works. And I found that I had three phone calls back to to try and set up a time, and they're very reasonable. And and I think that maybe if if some of our residents realize that the program is a benefit to them to have people come into their home, that that this is a very legitimate company. And uh, I believe that, you know, maybe we could do a little bit more promoting of them so that people are reassured, because I've had a couple of questions from, well, why are we doing this? And, you know, can these guys come into my home sort of situation? So I think that um, our experience has been very favorable. And I think that that type of information needs to be shared with residents. That might increase some of the uptake and response from those that haven't responded. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Daly, and then Counsel Cummings.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Doll. Through you to Director Operations. With phase two rollout, uh, mentioning the fifteen-year kind of being the benchmark that you want to um, start replacing or making sure that you we got those meters out of our system. With phase two rollout, will that capture that those meters of fifteen years and above? Or are we looking further down the road even uh, yet to? Because this is substantial, this is, this is huge, right? So thanks, Adrian.
Yeah, a great question. So phase two would look at continuing on on the progress. Of our approximately four thousand meters in our inventory, I believe the number is three thousand and forty-eight, our fifteen years or older. So we would have to continue this year over year to address that deficiency.
And thank you.
Counsel Cummings.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I'm not too sure how it's, the questioning has been coming from the citizenry about our meter replacement. I know I've got fielded a number of questions about smart meter technology and a lot of misinformation that's out there on the internet about smart meters. Correct me if I'm mistaken, I remember replacing water meters when I used to work in utilities department. There are smart meters already installed in people's houses and that they transmit all the time. We just don't pick them up all the time. And we're just replacing them with smarter smart meters. Are we getting any feedback uh, at the administrative level that I'm seeing on the political level for the whole smart meter concept?
Couple of points, um, you're correct in the sense that a lot of the existing meters are technically smart. They have readers called MXUs attached to them, which is how we pick up our signal during our monthly reads. Some of the issues that people are concerned with for the smart meters is just, um, you know, we've heard some radiation concerns. However, we do have data to educate people on that. Um, we are hearing that people don't want to necessarily be tracked. Um, but I I think you hit the nail on the head. We do already track their consumption for billing purposes, so this is really no different. Uh, one of the messages we are trying to get to those who are more concerned about the meters in general is that this would actually help them. Um, it's going to be a bit more accurate on their end, as evidenced with the pilot program. And then it will also let us know if there's any issue in their internal plumbing. So a recurring issue that people don't often see because it's from a minor leak in their house, whether it's from a faucet, toilet, those types of plumbing, um, quite common. They won't necessarily see that leak, but these meters, because they're monitoring all the time, will actually assess what the trends are. So they will identify that, for example, there's a spike overnight and this suggests that there is a leak internally. So at the end of the day, we would, that would get flagged in the system, and then we would contact that landowner to give them that information. So there are benefits to to their side as well.
Yep, thank you for sharing that, Counsel Ryan.
Uh, thank you very much, Mayor Doll, and through you to Director Pedro. Um, with regards, just a clarification for me, then you you're asking to um, to increase the number of meters or proposing to increase the number of meters that we're putting in uh, this year. Um, and you mentioned about the sanitary sewer relining program. Are you looking at doing one or the other, or does it just mean that the sanitary sewer relining would be done later on, or what's what's your, what's your actual, because I'm not quite clear what you were asking or saying?
Yeah, for for sure, happy to clarify. So because we are working with a set budget, we preemptively at the beginning of the year allocated certain amounts towards each initiative. Um, we did allocate quite a bit to sanitary main relining. So we would essentially internally reallocate to doing phase two of the meters. And so sanitary main relining likely wouldn't be completed until next year at the earliest. Now that being said, we're making that decision based on the fact that we're not quite comfortable making a decision on which sanitary mains to do at this time. So a lot of that is based on the investigation from the camera work that we're doing. Excuse me, because we don't have all those, all of that data and all that footage, I don't think it'd be a, uh, we wouldn't be comfortable making a decision on which sanitary mains to do at this point.
Okay, supplemental then, and perhaps through to the CEO. Um, what what would be the problem in coming forward with a, you know, budget adjustment if we decide to do both things? If we pin down our priorities later in the summertime with regards to the relining and then continue on to add on to these additional meters that uh, Director Pedro was suggesting, would we be looking at a budget adjustment and what kind of, um, you know, is the seven hundred, eight hundred meters the same amount as the sanitary sewer relining, because I don't have the budget in front of me, obviously?
Yeah, Adrian can comment on the exact specifics or differentials in the in the cost, but I imagine we'll just be replacing what's available in the relining budget with and adding that to the meter budget. It's totally possible to do a budget amendment in the realm of, um, what would this be, four hundred thousand dollars-ish?
Uh, this would be about six fifty.
Six fifty. It's just our reserves can't handle it. That's what where the money would be coming from, so I, of course, counsel can tell me to do what they wish, but um, I wouldn't be comfortable bringing that forward based on our current, already currently budgeted draw from reserves. So it's, I would say it's one or the other.
Okay, fair enough. Uh, yeah, I wasn't exactly sure what kind of money we're talking about, so if we're just talking about a six hundred and fifty thousand dollar hit to the budget, that is ouch factor to me. Um, so thank you. Uh, certainly, you know, I'll leave it in your capable hands to decide which which way is to go. And uh, if you do see a priority of of a sewer relining that is really like, it totally needs to be done now, um, I would imagine that you'll balance that all out, so thank you.
Perfect.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Now, jumping over to our public works group, uh, so similar to our utilities department, we are breaking out the key performance indicators as per our business plan. Um, it is quite detailed for public works, um, but we are working on all of these initiatives currently. And a similar work order summary, um, as you can see, there's a lot tied into other work orders or miscellaneous. That is a general catchall category. We are looking to break that down better in the future, um, but they have been quite active so far in Q two. Moving on to planning and infrastructure, so a number of initiatives going going on currently, um, asset management. Lynn and the team has been working quite diligently on this initiative. Um, unfortunately, there's a lot of data to go through, so it takes a quite a bit of time. But the team as a whole is working well together, so we are going to get there. Um, the nice thing about asset management is we are starting to do field data collection. So we do have the engineering summer student um, assisting with a lot of that, so it's nice to see that get started so we can feed that back into the asset management system. E permitting is progressing quite well. Um, we are on schedule to have this live to the public later this year. Uh, we are going to go live internally in June, later this June, uh, for us to start using on our own. And then once we work out all the kinks, we'll roll that out to the public later this year. On the engineering side, we are quite busy. Uh, there's a few larger developments that are taking up some time to review, but however, it's good progress for the town.
Director Pedro, we have a question. Counsel Daly.
Thank you, Mayor Doll. Through you to Director Pedro. Going back to your pie chart, could you give us a bit of a definition of what other miscellaneous is and what it consists of? It uh, seems to be quite general there, so.
Yeah, so the system right now will report on the work order types that we've broken down. So if there's anything that falls outside of that, it would automatically kick itself to the other or the miscellaneous. Um, miscellaneous could be something as simple as, um, you know, they're starting to track ordering supplies, for example, that would be under miscellaneous. Um, so there, it's not any significant work orders, I guess is the best way to describe it. But we do, honestly, it's it's a good point. We do want to get away from those miscellaneous categories, so that's going to result in us creating more work order types to better report on that data. Other is similar, so if it, the system is a little strange at this point. If it doesn't fit under miscellaneous, it'll just kick it automatically to other, so we do need to clean that up as well.
Counsel Wilson.
Thank you, Mayor Doll, and through you to the director. Just a quick question, page thirty-two, when you talk about the asphalt repairs, I see some zeros there. I know we have, I believe we have some bright new shiny equipment. This is just timing, or are there other factors that up until June, we hadn't been able to get to any of those repairs? And what I expect to see then, July, August, September, like things taking off like a rocket ship, or, thank you?
Uh, great question, and absolutely. So in May, we were sidetracked with a few other initiatives, um, and the rain didn't necessarily help. So what the team's been focused on essentially up until this point is trying to deal with alleys. So they've been, obviously, as counsel have seen, um, lots of reporter problems on that, so trying to address those issues. And then we have uh, part of the team occupied with essentially doing some expansion to the parking lot at the operations center. Um, now that being said, we do expect actually later this week to start on the asphalt repairs. So we're going to mark those out, dig those out, and start doing those internally. As far as the contracted asphalt repairs, we are finalizing those locations currently, and we plan to get those to the contractor by the end of the week. And then at that point, it's based on their schedule. However, we do have a deadline for them by September thirtieth, I believe, so, yeah. I had no concerns with it actually being completed. Okay, moving on. Uh, getting into our planning and development approval timelines, um, as counsel will see, valuation wise, we are um, a lot higher than last year. There's a, some larger projects that are factoring into that. Uh, from a processing approval timeline, I think we're looking fairly good at five and three days respectively. Nothing has come to counsel in Q two, hence the zero. And getting into building permit statistics, and so we are on track to have a higher valuation in twenty twenty-five than twenty twenty-four. Um, housing starts are are also mathematically slightly down than twenty twenty-four. However, I expect that this will be higher, but towards the end of the year. And development permits, similar commentary, so we did have one large, or sorry, two large permits that have increased the DP values there, so it is quite a high number compared to twenty twenty-four. Um, however, I think both from a building permit perspective and development permit perspective, it is a good sign that there is growth in the community, and we're seeing the effects of that. And just giving counsel an update on the spring cleanup initiatives. So we did have our pop-up transfer station and branch dump and grass clippings for the month of May. Um, the interesting thing we're seeing for the pop-up transfer station is that there was less use this year. Um, so we don't have the tonnages yet for the household waste or the hazardous waste yet. Um, but numerically, it was down quite a bit, so one hundred and nineteen last year versus eighty-eight this year. Um, so what I think we'll do later this year is we'll really assess the effectiveness of the program and if there's changes and if it does make sense for us to continue in this capacity. But all in all, the people that did use it, I think, were quite appreciative of it. And on the health and safety side, we've only had two incidents in Q two. Uh, both were relatively minor. Looking forward, so we are going to be continuing a lot of what we're already doing. Um, public works, as Counsel Wilson alluded to, asphalt and concrete repair programs are going to be ongoing. And internal hot mix repairs will also be starting soon. On the planning and infrastructure side, we are going to continue with our route patrol. So that's what I mentioned earlier that we're using on the asset management side to go out, identify infrastructure and identify deficiencies on that infrastructure, so excited there. And we, I'm at the end, happy to take any questions.
Yes, you are at the end. You're, we're looking ahead. No further questions from counsel? I see, yes, Counsel Wilson.
Thank you, Mayor Doll, and perhaps through you to the CAO. One of the things I'm passionate about is uh, third-party utility rate analysis. We know amongst a few things these days, uh, water, water rates are a hot button topic with our residents. Um, I've made the reference going back a couple of years when I was on the Water Commission, that water is fast becoming like gold. We know those rates are just going to go up. You have an aging plant in Innesville, et cetera, et cetera. We've got some good information here, uh, balanced with some information that says we still have a little bit more work to do, i.e. with meter replacement and everything else. Essentially, my question is, are we close? At what point does the CAO think we'll be in a position to do a, excuse me, comprehensive third-party uh, utility rate analysis, which I think would be very beneficial for our residents, help answer maybe some questions, and probably help us going forward with our budgets? Thanks.
Good question, and it's something that Director Pedro and I have spoken of fairly recently, so perhaps Adrian, I'll let you take a stab at this. And if it's a really good idea, I'll agree with you, and then uh, we'll, we'll move on.
For sure. Um, I I think in in principle, rate reviews are a good idea. Uh, typically, we would like to see them done every three to five years. And as I'm, I'm sure you're aware, they're quite involved, so we do look at everything from, you know, fixed rate versus variable rates, what are, what are our costs? Um, we do try and fund utilities to, utility rates to pay for the utility costs themselves, as well as maintaining those utilities. Um, and I don't believe one has, a comprehensive review has been done in the town recently, so I think it's likely due. However, it is a bit of a, it's a time-consuming undertaking, so depending on timing, I suppose we could start it at some point this year. It does take some time. That being said, I would be curious to determine what the goal is, I guess, based on kind of your comment earlier. So are we looking to see whether we're too low or too high, or just some feedback there?
I think, yeah, as to whether we're too low or too high, I'm not sure. I do know a lot of questions from residents around our rates, and so I guess to that point, maybe that is the answer. Residents feel our rates are high. And, yeah, it'd be interesting to see, like you referenced, the fixed versus variable analysis and split there. I think it would just go a long way to helping our residents understand the rates that we have, perhaps justify them, and maybe we find that there's, dare I say, our rates should be higher. I don't know. Don't put that in the paper. But, you know, it would be a justification, I think, and a good analysis around a variety of areas to help satisfy residents around where are our rates, are we comparable, and why are they set at the rate they are?
Thank you. We have Deputy Mayor Blatz, and then Counsel Cummings.
Thank you, Mayor Doll, and through you to either CAO Williams or Director Pedro. Going a little further along with what Counsel Wilson has asked for, during this analysis or during this third-party review, would they be able to determine whether all other utility companies are 100% cost recovery as we are, or would it determine if some of those other towns or municipalities are supplementing with the tax, with their taxes? So would that study incorporate that, or is that a question we can ask of the study?
Yep, absolutely. That could be included in the scope. Normally, they would look at comparators on a high level, but to get into that detail is certainly pertinent.
Well, I think that'd be more valuable, because I know it's very hard for us to justify, because we're 100% cost recovery, whereas I can't tell you whether or not Innisfail or, you know, Bowden or LaCom supplement their utilities with their taxes.
Absolutely, yeah.
And I'll add to that as well. Not that I have done one personally, but the ones I have read, I've never seen a rate reduction recommended, whether it's the city of Calgary last summer, and the water main break that was shone there, or what we're dealing with here, or anywhere, as I think in Canada, dare you say, local governments are dealing with decades of infrastructure deficits pushed to the current day, where you have critical systems failing. So even cost recovery, I believe we're close to cost recovery on the operating of a utility system. We are woefully underfunding the capital replacement. So when you ask a consultant, the consultant will do what you want the consultant to do in such a report. If counsel wants the recommendation on, let's say, cost recovery in terms of capital renewal expenses, that is a precipitous increase in rates. But for the operating, I think that's a very valuable exercise, just to ensure that our own budget matches with our own rate model in terms of operating the system, and counsel can decide based on your larger conversation around a reserve strategy and taxation and other revenue, what the comfort level is, so.
Counsel Cummings?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. A couple of questions on the development permit, building permit process, because I'm often interested more in the timeline of how that process works. If we look at the 2024 development stats, there's a large dwelling, multiple unit dwelling that was approved in May, which I believe is the apartment building that's going behind A&W. And then we look almost a year later at the building permits. Sorry, later that year, in August, another large building permit was issued, which I can only assume was that building. And correct me if I'm not mistaken, building permits have a one-year expiry rate? So when we issue a building permit, they have one year to complete, or is it one year to start? I'm not too sure how that works. And how they're, obviously, it was issued in August of last year. It hasn't started construction yet. It's not going to get done by August of this year. How hard or how difficult would it be for the developers to get extensions on those timelines to ensure that there is no real delay in the process of constructing the building once it's started?
Yep, fair question. So for the development permit and building permit, there's a year. So there's a timeline attached to both. That being said, we do issue extensions all the time, so it's not hard. Generally, you try to limit the amount of extensions, but it is common practice.
Thank you very much. Oh, is it supplemental? Go ahead. We'll go with Counsel Cummings, and then back to Counsel Wilson.
I'm learning supplementaries from Counsel Wilson, so can you just explain what a negative one building permit means? Because I've never seen a negative in the building permits before, and that kind of threw me for a loop.
That's a great question. I was hoping someone would catch that. So essentially, what happened, there's one property that went from a duplex to a single-family home, so hence the negative one.
Go ahead, Counsel Wilson.
Thank you, Mayor Doll. Through you to the CAO. Just a short snap question here, supplemental to the utility rate analysis. Just want to make sure I understand. So one of the things I was conscious of relative to rate analysis, we want to achieve some level of stability in our operation, and we are having progress, which is great. But I just want to make sure I understand. So there would be nothing to stop us from proceeding with the utility rate analysis, perhaps in the second half of this year, other than maybe some budgeted funds, to which I could initiate a GoFundMe page, I guess, to try and pay for that.
I have a 20, actually. I'll be the first one. Technically, you're correct, but as we discussed on this topic before, our current utility rates, they do factor in the water loss and INI costs, which I have ballparked in the past between 20 and 25% of the overall rates we charge. It's, I just see that as skewing whatever analysis is done until that's more under control. But if counsel's comfortable, let's, I would say, budget 2026 is the best time instead of right now, with the progress being achieved, then sure, I would totally support that. The other thing that adds to it, Olds is one of the, you know, growing list, but still not in the majority. We're on service commissions at both ends of water and wastewater. Both of those commissions have some substantial challenges. Water with, the Water Commission with, obviously, decaying infrastructure and the significant rate increases we've seen the last, at least in this year, and SRD, the Waste Water Commission with, you know, has been in the paper, and they're trying to figure out their $250 million capital liability. So we don't have a clear picture of anything outside of our fence. So that's another thing counsel's to be aware of. Though we're at the whims of those, the health of those commissions, unlike, you know, Missalis to our immediate south that have lagoon systems, where INI is not that big of an issue for them, because they discharge into a pond, whereas we send ours to Red Deer, and their capital obligations are very different than ours. So probably a bit long-winded, but what it is, up to counsel to determine when to pull that trigger, and I think we're getting close to that point.
Counsel Ryan?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Through you to Director Pedro. I was just wondering, this is just a comment, not a question really, but on the water loss at INI, we've got 2025. I was wondering, could we, could we get that stat done for 2024 as a comparison? Because that would really show us, you know, I know you're showing the charts later on, but not the dollar value. So it'd be really interesting to see if you have the stats available, to see a 2024 comparison for January, February, March, April, because then you would really get a really clear picture of how we're doing in all the processes that we're, what we're doing in our utilities area, and addressing this issue, because it is a costly issue for our community. And it would be really interesting to see the stats in comparison, if that's possible. Just a comment.
Yep, for sure. We do track all of that information. Just for clarity, so are we sitting on this chart to provide 2024 and 2025 for cubic meters and percentage and dollar value?
Well, I'd like to see all three things that you're tracking here, your meter squared and your percentage, or it's not squared, but three, in your dollar value. If all of that can be duplicated to show the 2024, what we had in those months, you know, so that your next report would include your May, June, July, maybe August, depending on when you're doing your report, we would be able to see in comparison to 2024, what was it in those areas, because that way we would get a true picture of how our, what we're doing is mitigating this issue.
For sure. Yeah, we can show it that way. That's a good suggestion, yeah.
Mayor?
No, Director Pedro basically answered what I was going to suggest, that if, even if we didn't do it month by month, if we had the entire year that showed each month on the bottom, such as we do with the development and the building permits, that might be useful to counsel, too, if you can't break it out month by month.
Sorry, whatever way is workable. I mean, I don't know what your stats are available, if you could just pull them up or not, but it would be really good to see a comparison.
Very good. I think everyone's had their round of questions with you. Did you have a closing comment at all, Director Pedro? Pedro, very good. Thank you very much for your time, and I'd entertain a motion. Counsel Daly?
Thank you, Mayor Doll. I move that counsel accepts the Infrastructure Services Quarterly Report as presented for information.
Thank you. I will then call for the vote. Those in favor, that is carried. Once again, thanks. We'll move right along now to item 5A, please, page 41 of your agenda, Mountain View Seniors Housing Sponsorship Request. It's in your package, you've read it, and so I will go straight to the motion. Yes, I'll go with Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Doll. I move that counsel approve a one-time sponsorship in the amount of $2,000 for the 2025 15th Annual Golf Classic in support of Mountain View Seniors Housing.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Blatz. Does counsel have any questions with regards to the motion? Seeing none, then, I'll call the vote. Those in favor, that is carried. The information sharing was wonderful, so, and it's a good cause. And we're moving down to page 52 now of the agenda. 6A, Correspondence and Information. We have one correspondence and we, information. This is the Canadian Association of Municipal Administrators, and our very own CAO, Mr. Brent Williams, got a long service recognition award. And I would ask if all counsel could meet, and we are going to get a photo with CAO Williams, and I believe Shyle has asked for communications to come in. So if we could just, where would you like us to stand? In front of the flags, or at the back?
Madam Mayor, would it be better to do that at the end of the meeting? We can just plow through the last couple of items and then do the photo together after the meeting?
Hey, we can certainly do that. All right. Does anybody have any questions, then, to the correspondence? I'd like a motion, please. Counsel Wilson.
Thank you, Mayor Doll. I make the motion that the Correspondence and Information Report ending June 9th, 2025 be received for information.
Thank you. I will now call for the motion, or for the vote, sorry, those in favor. That's carried. We'll move down to page 54, and this is our CAO Williams Chief Administrative Officer Report.
Thank you, Mayor Doll. Two items in the report, and just one brief verbal update. So reporter problem data from the last 30 days is highlighted here. As you can see, parks has become the highest one, largely due to the naturalization concerns shown by residents. And to parse that out a bit more, we went through the, well, 39 total parks complaints. I believe 27 or 28 of those were naturalization-related, from 21 individuals concerned about naturalization, and then what you heard from people at your Coffee with Counsel session last week. Outside of that, back alleys are also coming up there this time of year. We have, we have a deficiency there in terms of a lot of drainage concerns and certainly gravel cover, so our grading crew, which consists of a grader and a loader, are working on that the last few weeks, and even so today. Outside of that, general road issues and sidewalk issues, which hopefully will be helped be mitigated with the 2025 respective programs. On the action items list, the only two items on there are the outstanding notice of motions, the one for the animal shelter due at the end of this month, and then the policy on ASP and ARP reviews, which should be due July, community of the whole. No issues forthcoming there. And just a brief verbal update regarding the Olds Fire Department. You've may have seen on Facebook or from the updates I sent you, that we have been a part of now three deployments, the most recent one happening over the weekend, where we sent one of our chiefs up to the Grand Prairie area. And kudos to the fire department for always helping out in these times of need across the province. But to tie it back into counsel advocacy, perhaps, fire in general, I think it's been almost 10 years, nine years since the Fort McMurray wildfire, which kicked off, I think, nine consecutive years of significant wildfire issues in Alberta. The province is still relying heavily on municipalities to provide these services, oftentimes very far from their home municipality, stretching their own coverage. Obviously, we're happy to help, but the lack of investment in wildfire and firefighting capacity of the province is somewhat concerning, that it's stretching municipal resources or relying so heavily on there. At the same time, the province is cutting our capital funding, which we use to buy things like fire trucks and fire suppression equipment, at the same time is asking us to do more. And at the same time, they actually reduced the reimbursement rate they pay for fire trucks about three years ago to go help from what we call the Alberta transportation rate. They established a new wildfire mutual aid or deployment rate, which is roughly 50% of what it once was. Then the secondary issue, which is not related to that, is the ongoing EMS ambulance issues, where our fire department is responding to, fortunately, not a significant increase, but a growing, consistent increase in medical responses. Again, something that they're trained to do, and we're happy to do it, but it's not municipalities' job to deliver healthcare services, and that's becoming more and more commonplace in Olds and certainly across the province, without any reimbursement whatsoever. So that's on property tax dollars because of ambulance shortages. So it's something to, for counsel to be aware of, and perhaps should you see fit to discuss how it fits into advocacy priorities with the upcoming corporate plan review and what have you. With that, my report is complete.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor, question?
Yes, sort of a question-comment combined. Going back to our reporter problem, and with the naturalization, I was wondering if it would be with counsel's approval, perhaps, that this naturalization comes back to our June 23rd council meeting for a full discussion on it, that the public can be aware of the decisions and how they were, how they came about. You all know my feelings on naturalization, as I'm one of the areas affected, but I do believe that we should have had a better, more fulsome discussion with our residents, and in hindsight, 50-50 in council, that aligns with council's strategic plan, where we promised to communicate and engage with our citizens, and I believe we could have done a much better job as council. So therefore, I ask that maybe counsel would agree to having this come back to our June 23rd meeting.
Deputy Mayor, I'll open the floor for any comments from counsel. Counsel Wilson?
Thank you, Mayor Doll. Yeah, I just, I certainly support the initiative. I think we owe it to our residents. We certainly heard loud and clear at the June 5th coffee with counsel. It was one of the better-attended sessions we've had, and a very passionate topic, so I think we owe it to our residents, if in fact, we do have a discussion towards the end of June. Get something out to the residents as to the plan going forward, staying the course. If it's going to change, what does that change look like? So I certainly support the request for a meeting sooner than later. Excuse me.
Thank you, Counsel Daly.
Thank you, Mayor Doll, and I agree that we should have a more wholesome discussion on the naturalization, but I also am wondering when- on the naturalization, but I, I also am wondering when and where would we do like an open house information session with the public, because I heard that loud and clear the other night as well, is that they, they want this information and they would like to have their input on this information as well. So I'm just thinking aloud here where, where, how, and why all this is going to fit together.
Well, I believe Counsel Daily, that if we had this discussion on June 23, then we could determine that, and that would give administration time to bring this back to us with some information, and then therefore we can put it out and determine from there, because I know we are going to discuss it again at our July service level review, but I think that we need to get something out sooner than later to our residents, particularly those that are affected directly by the naturalization, and to make others' residents aware of, of what the plan is and how we are going to roll this plan out.
Well, yeah, and I agree 100% with you, but also what I heard at the Coffee with Council was they want input. And so I don't think that us discussing this without their input first is going to resolve the problem. I think we need to, you know, build a plan with their input as well.
No, I understand what you're saying, but I'm saying that we could get the information to come back to us. Hopefully, the media could pick up on some of this as well, make it aware that we have listened to our residents, that we are hearing their concerns and comments, and that we are going to plan something for them to be involved with, is what I want to be the initial step.
Thank you, Counsel Cummings.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd be happy to have a conversation about all of this as well, because it makes sense, coming up to a service level review to adjust our service levels as necessary, because when we talk service levels, we also talk cost. And what I've responded to a lot of citizens who complain about the dandelions is very simple. Because we've neglected other things for decades, we're now neglecting dandelions to fix our water and sewer and other more important things than dandelions. And if we have a fulsome discussion about this, like everybody's asking, the realities have to be placed out as well, is how many percentage points of increase in tax rate will have to occur to challenge the dandelion infestation in our community and this natural, nationalization thing. A process has to be developed first, though, before we could just do one thing or the other, and that's what administration comes back at the next regular council meeting with a proposal on what process they would recommend for us to follow to get everybody's input that's needed, so we can have a correct conversation during service level, and we can make budget adjustments as necessary. Unfortunately, we can't increase our tax rate until next year, right? So where's the money going to come from has to be a major topic at any sort of discussions we have, and what other programs we're going to stop spending money on in order to tackle the dandelions. That, that, that is the reality of a discussion like that. That's why we made that decision in the first place, to do naturalization, because we had that discussion at this council table, and we agreed in the budget to change the service level to include naturalization because of the budget constraints that we're having. And the conversation I heard around this table is we can't raise the tax rate any higher than we did, so we had to cut services, and dandelions were one of those services. So just a reminder to everybody, we've had this conversation. Regardless of how many people complain about that conversation, they have to fully understand the opposite side of the conversation. And again, I don't want to start, start a debate here. I just want to make sure administration knows all of the topics that will have to come back at the next meeting so that we can have the proper discussion moving forward. I don't want to have a debate here, this back and forth. I've had my say.
Thank you. Well, I feel, I enjoy the conversations we just had around the con, the table. We're all well, other than yourself that was at, on vacation in a way, physically and verbally live, what everybody had to say at the, at the, I'm going to say table, however we were standing up and, and having a good engagement. So I, I see and hear what you're saying, Counsel Cummings, about the idea of handing this to, to our CIO and having them come up with something for the next meeting, but I do understand that what Deputy Mayor Blatz is saying, we all received information, I am sure, because typically I don't really receive a lot of information and feedback from a lot of these types of issues. However, I received several and some pretty deep ones where people actually did mathematical figures on the use of dandelions. And I shared it with our CIO, and we have incoming information coming all the time. So I really feel that if we're, if we're asking everybody to forward it to report a problem, as our CIO just shared with us, that he's got so many reports that I've received already. I've added probably about three more today, and if we continue that, our CIO will have something to work with for us to talk about at, at a meeting in June. That's just my thoughts. It's ongoing. It seems to be everywhere. If you're riding your bike or walking, we're still getting it, and then we'll be well-prepared. I believe it was Counsel Ryan, and then back to Counsel Wilson.
Oh, thank you very much, Mayor Doll, and I, I do find that there's a need for this to come back, certainly for, for the discussion. You know, some of the questions that I have received at Coffee with Council included comments about dandelions, noxious weeds, mosquitoes, believe it or not, being, being more in the, in the taller, taller grasses. I think more, a clearer picture of the process of how naturalization occurs is probably what the community really needs. Certainly, when you take a look at, I've, I've been doing a lot of reading of this lately. I, I, before Coffee with Council, I was, I was obviously in Ottawa, and I missed a lot of Facebook postings and didn't get any phone calls about it, but I did do a lot of reading about this so far, and it does take a year or two for naturalization to actually take a hold and actually look good. And they do say the first couple of years, it's going to not look good. And certainly, Director Lapointe, when he presented this, also said to us that, that very thing. So sometimes a lot of this will have to be, you know, communication with our public. I, I think really what we, what we lacked was, was going out and saying, you know, what the process is going to be, and certainly telling our public that, yeah, it's not going to look nice in the first couple of years, but it's going to look great later on. And that's how I feel, like when, from what I've read, that's, that's what I've learned. And maybe we jumped in this really quickly with too many properties, may have, should have been a smaller pilot project to begin with, but I mean, it's certainly something we can debate and have a conversation with on June 23 at our next meeting. So I'm in favor of bringing this back.
Yes, Counsel Wilson.
Thank you, Mayor Doll. Yeah, just my brief comments. I, I agree with Counsel Cummings. I don't think this is the time and the place for the debate, other than state some opinions. And my last words before we get into the debate discussion down the road is, one, I think we owe it to ourselves and our citizens, certainly our citizens, to take their feedback. CIO referenced, I'm not sure, 27 or 28 RAPs on naturalization from 21 individuals. Clearly, the people are speaking. There's a passion, there's emotion out there. We owe it to them to give, to acknowledge that feedback. And what are we going to do? Whether it's, as Counsel Cummings said, we all had this discussion, and we stay the course, or are we going to adjust? There's nothing wrong with taking the feedback and adjusting the plan and its execution. And again, I'm not going to debate it, but I always hear, well, you know, if we're going to respond to it, there's more tax increase. Well, there is another discussion. We all know we're up against the wall physically, and I use, you know, physically as in F-I-S-C-A-L-Y as far as our resources, but what can we trade off? Is that even an option? So before we start talking about incremental tax, let's also talk about what the trade-offs and the reprioritizations are, knowing that there isn't much wiggle room that we have, so.
And also, there's the passionate side of the people, and there were some very, very passionate people at the Coffee with Council session at the farmer's market. And, and I do understand the biggest question that, the, the most passionate people had is how did you determine the sites? And that is something that I really couldn't answer. So it is, it does need a further discussion. I'll take one more question. Counsel Ryan?
I have a comment that is not related to that with regards to the CEO's verbal report on the firefighters' situation. So, but before we move on, I was going to ask Deputy Mayor Blatz if she wanted to make a motion for that to come back to the council meeting for June 23 as a separate motion, would you? So we can put that, park that aside, but I just have a comment with regards to the wildfires, if that's okay. This is a, this is, I agree totally with what, what CIO Williams had mentioned with regards to the lack of investment in the wildfires. And I think the province is moving towards looking at this, because there has been a report from RMA, did a report in conjunction with the Alberta municipalities, and they had a lot of input. There's been a group of, that was established, has been established with firefighters from different communities to, to, to further investigate the wildfire situation and create a man, sort of a management board of some kind. So I'm not sure whether or not that, and I've read that report, but it was a couple of months ago, and it certainly came to our Infrastructure Committee at the Alberta Municipalities level, I suppose you want to say. So I think that there is some movement towards that, but I, I do agree with what you've said there, CIO Williams, with regards to, you know, the, the cutting back, the reducing of the capital funding to our communities at a time when we are fighting wildfires and we do need equipment. This is the time to invest in our communities as opposed to cutting back. And certainly, I also agree with you with regards to the EMS responses as well, and I think both of those have had resolutions that have gone at Alberta Municipalities, and certainly, you know, if we, those are always things that I can bring back to the Alberta Municipalities Infrastructure Committee at our next meeting to, we, we follow and we track all of the resolutions that have been made, and those, and we look at what our outcomes have been. So it's, it's really well-tracked, and so it's something that I can also bring up at our next board meeting. Thanks.
You're welcome. Deputy Mayor Blatz?
Thank you, Mayor Doll. My comment also relates to sending our firefighters to remote areas. I think one thing that many of our residents don't understand or realize that when these individuals volunteer to go ahead, they're usually taking their own time or vacation time from their job, and I think that that is something that our residents need to be aware and realize, that, you know, they make a big commitment, not only to our own fire department, but to another community, and I think that, you know, thanks to those individuals who have gone so far this year, and will probably be going more and more often.
Yes, and to Counsel Ryan's comment, the RMA did release the wildfire working group report in January of this year. It was an RMA-led initiative. It did have some input from provincial representatives, and largely, a lot of the key recommendations came down to, you know, funding more, providing more resources for trading, for personnel, and for equipment. And I think the, certainly did a great job of framing the issue, which is whether the province acts on it, because obviously, when, when 360 municipalities are there, or a percentage of that is able to provide a backstop, it's probably a cheaper option, but we're feeling the crunch with the cost of our fire apparatus, which have doubled in the last five years, and running a fire department without even responding to a call is a very expensive proposition. That, I think, if the province took a holistic view of how we fund fire services and these deployments, it would help everyone out, so.
Okay, is there any further questions to this item we're speaking to? Counsel Wilson?
Thank you, Mayor Doll. I, I have a question, but not specific to naturalization or anything. So if I allow a little bit of latitude at the appropriate time, I would like to ask a question of the CIO.
This is the CIO report. Please do.
Thank you. So as I said, it doesn't relate directly to the CIO report, but I would like to, based on some feedback I've received in the community, not related to naturalization, the CIO could just comment. So I think in May, we went down a path of enforcing the temporary sign bylaw, which is fine. We have the bylaw. We enforce it. I'm just wondering, kind of two questions. Was there anything in particular that drove that enforcement, that decision to, to enforce the bylaw that's there? And equally, if not more important, what can businesses, individuals in town do? What's the best way to convey their, their thoughts, their feelings, the impact this would have on their business with the temporary sign bylaw? Is that the Lub engagement, that land use bylaw engagement that's going to be coming up, or something else? Thank you.
Right, so some background, if you're unsure with Counsel Wilson, speaking of, some letters were issued earlier this spring to businesses mainly along Highway 27 that had temporary signs in place. If you're aware of Schedule D of the land use bylaw deals with temporary signage, and I believe there's a period of, let's say, 90 days, if I had to pick something, that you may have a temporary sign erected, a commercial property. So what drove that, outside of us just enforcing council's bylaw, the rules you give us, we tend to enforce them as best we can. When people apply for temporary signage, we've been temporary beyond the 90 days, we've been denying them that because they were applied more for permanent signage, which goes against council's land use bylaw. But then they brought up correctly, so, well, why does so-and-so business, and this business and that business, have these signs here that have been there for, you know, many years? And we said, good point. So we started investigating and found that, you know, a lot of these signs that are movable in nature, temporary, billboards are the best example, in fact, went against council's land use bylaw. But there was, so there has been a lot of feedback given. What we have decided to do administratively is to hold off on enforcement actions until December 1 is our current tentative date, in this, which case, the land use bylaw review, which is going to kick off officially with council on June 23, and then initially in early July in time for your, your second Coffee with Council session on July 10, and throughout the summer led by the consultant. That will be an opportunity for the entire land use bylaw to be engaged upon, of which Schedule D temporary signage is part of that review. So is there anything, and so those, those people, those complainants have been told December 1 is, is now kind of our, our date until we push things after review, and council can decide at the time when the land use bylaw is coming to you for first, second, and finally, third reading, whether that schedule meets its intent. And I'm assuming it's a balance, and I, you don't want Highway 27 to look like a cheap Las Vegas billboard club, but also you want to make sure businesses are, you know, we're understanding that a lot of businesses that are financially strained and can't afford maybe expensive signs or permanent signage, and what that balance looks like. But right now, we are enforcing the rules that council has in the bylaw, but the bylaw is 25 years old and hasn't been reviewed since that time. So I think it's opportunity, if nothing else.
Go ahead, Counsel Wilson.
Thank you. I'll be very brief. I, I thank administration for that concession, that pause, because I did, I haven't had a lot of businesses, but I haven't had three businesses in the last month talk to me about the implications of enforcing that bylaw and what it does to them, because the existing temporary sign is very cost-effective for the businesses to advertise. So I appreciate the leniency there, and for sure, we'll look forward to the Lub discussion. Thanks.
Very good. Is there any more questions towards the CIO report? I'd ask for a motion, please. Deputy Mayor Blatz?
Thank you, Mayor Doll. I move that the Chief Administrative Officer Report be accepted for information.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I will now call for the vote. Those in favor, that is carried. We have, Deputy Mayor Blatz would, I believe, like to make another motion here.
Thank you, Mayor Doll. I would like to move that council direct our, our CIO to bring back to the June 23, 2025 council meeting, a discussion on the naturalization processes and how we will move forward tentatively in the future with this process.
Thank you. Can you please provide that motion to the recording clerk?
Yes, I will.
Thank you. Are there any questions towards the motion? I will call for the vote. Those in favor, that is carried. Thank you. And Shaila, she'll provide, Deputy Mayor will provide you that motion. Very good. And our last item of the day, page 57, is a notice of motion from Counsel Cummings on a proposed bylaw regulating the affixing of signs to town property. We do not need a motion for this, however, I would give the opportunity to Counsel Cummings if he wishes to speak to this.
Well, thank you, Madam Mayor. I don't think I need to- I don't think I need to speak on it. It's, uh, the document I provided in the agenda does cover the gist of everything. I do have a presentation prepared for next to, or next council meeting that this will be presented at, hopefully, that goes into more details and even has some sample signage that has been located throughout town over the last few months.
Very good. Thank you, Counsel Cummings. Does anyone have questions? Yes, Deputy Mayor Blatts?
Thank you, Madam Doll. And through you to CEO Williams, would this be incorporated already with the land use bylaw review that we're doing?
Uh, short answer is yes. Schedule D does touch on all temporary signage, um, but I believe as part of, um, some information, and I'll talk to Counsel Cummings later this week, we'll prepare kind of what exists already and perhaps a little response on, on how to word it if the proposed bylaw or motion should council go to proceed. But long answer, shorter, yes, we believe the land use bylaw already deals with this matter in some form.
Go, uh, go ahead, Deputy Mayor Blatts?
Well, this is not really supplemental, so maybe I'll open it up to other council first if someone else has a comment, but if I could be put in the queue, thanks.
Okay, we'll move over to Counsel Wilson.
Thank you, Madam Doll. Yeah, and just very briefly, I think Counsel Cummings alluded to, he has some evident, not evidence, pictures, I guess, because that was, the one question I had there, are we trying to, um, solve a problem that doesn't exist or are we being proactive in terms of addressing?
Point of order. Thanks.
I understand.
So this is a notice of motion and is not debatable.
Not debatable.
So the conversation like you're having right now would be at the next meeting where we'd have this sort of conversation about the motion and stuff like that. But a notice of motion is not something that can be debated or discussed, just presented and then next meeting, it's on the agenda. That's when conversations you have, but we're not allowed to debate or discuss this at this time.
For catching that, I was just going to note that, unfortunately, that he is correct. Um, the full debate will be done at the next regular council meeting.
All right.
Thank you for your, um, comment. And did you have something, Deputy Mayor Blatts? You said you would want to be in the queue.
Well, I was going to ask one, well, I was going to ask one more question of CEO Williams, but no, I, I'll take note of Counsel Cummings' remarks and I'll wait till if this gets passed to the next debate.
Correct. There's no motion and no debate on a notice of motion, so. Hearing that, I'd like to remind council to please stay back and we will have a photo. And I want to thank everybody in the gallery and all our viewers for spending time with us this afternoon. I adjourn the meeting at two thirty-three PM.